Good evening. Glad to welcome you all to the Thursday, January 19th, 2023 regular monthly meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. And this meeting is now called to order as we now please stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you, may be seated. We do have some very special guests here with us on this evening, and I ask that Dr. Bracy we introduce them at this time.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
And welcome to our January 19th meeting. Tonight, we have students from Simonsdale Elementary School who will be here with us this evening to speak with us and give us the Pledge of Allegiance as well as the school statement. As I call your name, please come forward. Our first student is Kennedy Hill. And while Kennedy is coming, I will read some great information about her. She's a sixth grader at Simonsdale. She enjoys reading class and especially loves reading good books. She's an honorable student and has been recognized as Student of the Month. She is a member of the school's Safety Patrol, the Eagle Eye News Crew, and loves skating in her free time. She also is a hallways ministry street church volunteer. The Saturday ministry services our homeless population by providing hot meals, clothes, and worship. Kennedy loves to make bracelets and other jewelry and has developed a love for sewing from her grandmother. She wants to become a fashion designer and wants to donate her clothes to those in need. Her parents are Mr. Nicholas Hill and Mrs. Janet Hill. Mr. and Mrs. Hill, if you're in the audience, please stand. Our next student is Kalins Randall. Kalins, if you will come forward. Kalins is a fifth grader whose favorite subject is math. In fact, he has been called the human calculator by his classmates. He's an honorable student, also a member of the Eagle Eye News Crew, where he does the joke segment of the broadcast. He also plays baseball, basketball, and soccer. He especially excels in soccer, where he earned a trophy for being the best striker on his team and hopes to earn a scholarship playing someday. He attends A-Live Church, and he is a member of the worship team. In the future, Kalins wants to become a car mechanic. He says if a car break down, he'll be able to fix it. And most importantly, all car mechanics make a lot of money. Yeah, he's not wrong with that. His parents are Mr. Paul Randall and Mrs. Courtney Randall. Mr. and Mrs. Randall, please stand and be recognized at this time. All right, I know, well, you all, you're going, you're going to get started.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, School Board Chairman, Dr. Patillo, School Board Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Atkinson, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, School Board members, and Superintendent's Cabinet. My name is Kalins Randall, and I'm proud to be a fifth grade student at Simonsdale Elementary School. Our school motto is "Soaring High with Eagle Pride." I would like to tell you how we strive to soar a little higher each and every day. Our school is fortunate to have dedicated and caring teachers and administrators. They encourage us to always do our best. We begin our day with a positive message from the morning announcements. That motivates us to have a great teaching and learning day. Our teachers design lessons which include project-based learning, small group activities, and stations, science labs, and technology to keep us motivated and interested in our learning. Our encore teachers go the extra distance to provide activities that broaden our knowledge of the arts and strengthen our bodies. At Simonsdale, we are continuing to increase our love of reading, which helps us achieve more in all content areas. This year, our Title I program enabled us to receive a bookworm vending machine. Students earn dojo points, which can be traded in for shiny gold coins. The gold, the coins allow us students to get books from the vending machines. M&amp;M's move out the way. Also, with thanks to our community partners, Delta Kappa Gamma, we also have a little library this year. The little library is located outside of our school building, allowing students to have access to books even when school is closed. Along with growing academically, we are always being challenged to build our leadership skills and good character. For example, our school has school safety patrols. These students consistently model Eagle pride and contribute to keeping our school safe and orderly. You may spy our school safety patrols assisting with monitoring our hallways or escorting a new student to class. This year, with PBIS, our students have created a broadcast, our very own news channel, Eagle Eye News. At the beginning of the year, Ms. Moss and Ms. Glass, our executive producers, had to make sure we created a good show. Now, our Eagle Eye News crew creates an awesome show nearly all on our own. Our crew does all the writing, editing, filming, and interviewing for the broadcasts. Our Eagle Eye News program, where we share the positive things that are happening around Simonsdale Elementary, includes a teacher interview segment, a joke segment, and special features. Let us know if you have a positive news story you'd like to share. We can feature you in our upcoming broadcast. The students and staff at our school are proud to be Eagles, and we demonstrate the qualities of our school pledge. At Simonsdale, we will be P- positive, R- respectful, I- in control, D- dependable, and show E- excellence. At Simonsdale, we are always soaring high with Eagle pride. Thank you.
Don't leave yet. Come, come back. So I want to also recognize the Principal and Assistant Principal, Ms. Hines, as you come. Yeah, Ms. Tammy King, Ms. Christine Castro, if you all will come forward as well.
Good, okay. Kalins, thank you for a wonderful speech, and I think any of our board members would be happy to come over and give you an Eagle Eye report one day on how the board works and what it is that we do and what it is you think we should do, so to make your education better. So I think if there's any lovely person up here that you would like to invite to come and do it, I think we would all be happy to do that with you. And also, too, you might want to hit our student representative over there and give your students at Simonsdale an edge in so that when y'all make it to the higher grades, you can come and do what they do with us, okay? But thank you so much, good job. And Kennedy, you can design my clothes anytime. I know, I'm looking at that headband, very much so. So, good job, both of you. Keep up the good work, we're proud of you, and you guys make us excited about what it is that we do. So thank you for being here. Ms. King, Ms. Castro, good to see you guys. Thank you so much. Y'all have a good evening. Thank you.
We want to get a picture as well. If you all can remain, we want to get a picture of y'all. Lauren's going to take a picture here.
And Mom and Daddy are going to come and get pictures, too.
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I would like to say that I am also a very proud Eagle, and I appreciate the opportunity that I have each and every day to work with these wonderful students, our staff, our community. Thank you for allowing me to be able to have such an awesome, and we call it a job, but it is something that I love to do every single day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.5 is the School Board Mission Statement, Ms. Hines.
Thank you, Chair. The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.6, attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Dr. Cotten?
Present.
Mrs. Futrell?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Schumake?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.7, approval of the agenda for January 19th, 2023. I entertain a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Standing now, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotten?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. One of my favorite moments of the evening, Agenda item 4.1, our student representative report, and we are fortunate to have both of our representatives here on this evening. Our representative and our alternate to join us on today.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Bracy, Chairman Dr. Patillo, and Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board, and guests. I would like to start by saying Happy New Year. I wish everyone good blessings and good health, everyone in the building. So just last week, on January 9th, seniors from all three of our high schools started first college at the TCC Portsmouth campus. There are 97 students from Churchland, 49 from Manor, and 36 from Norcombe. They, including myself, are loving it. Students are saying how much this program is preparing them for college and giving them a sense to develop professional skills, such as time management and self-accountability. This program is absolutely amazing, and I'm so very grateful to have it in our city. And I'd just like to say the number of kids that we have involved this year is amazing, and we just hope to grow it. Next, I would like to acknowledge the fact that it is Virginia Schools' Principal Appreciation Week. I want to shout out to all the principals of Portsmouth. You guys did an excellent job setting an example for students and doing what you do best. Last but not least, I would like to recognize Norcombe's National Honor Society and Student Ambassadors. At the beginning of the week, members of both organizations took part in beautifying the Elizabeth River Trail in honor of Dr. Martin Luther King's Day of Service. Great job, guys, and keep up the work. Thank you for listening, and, thank you for listening to my student report for the meeting.
Thank you so much. Do you have any comments from board members? Ms. Hines?
Thank you. I just wanted to say to both of you, second semester is here, it's not the time to get lazy. That senioritis is real, so keep pushing, keep doing what it is that you do, and we will be there cheering you on when you walk across that stage in June. So just keep that eye on that prize, keep working hard. You're going to have times where you're going to want to stop and where you're going to say, oh, my God, what did I get myself into? But that's part of life, so just, just keep going because you are at that finish line. And so, speaking to you as a teacher, don't get lazy, keep your eye on the prize. Talking to you as a board member, I want to say thank you for what you do. Thank you for keeping us abreast of, you know, with the kids and, and keeping our voices out in the schools as well. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Thomas?
Hi, thank you for your report. Did you say, how many students did you say was in the first college program?
So there are 97 from Churchland.
Oh, you did say 97. Okay, wow.
49 from Manor and 36 from Norcombe.
Wow, that's amazing. That is amazing. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you so much, ladies.
Thank you.
Good evening.
That's a lot. That's a major increase.
Agenda item 5.1, consideration of a resolution recognizing African American History Month, February 2023. Dr. Cromartie.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Bracy, members of the board. Resolution recognizing February as African American History Month reads as follows. Whereas its advocates for children, we work to provide appropriate opportunities for them to acquire the tools, skills, and knowledge necessary for their success and future well-being. And whereas education is an integral part of instilling our appreciation for America's defining values, freedom, equality, and respect for one another. And whereas the Portsmouth City School Board is proud to support America's role as the leader of discovery and innovation and is deeply committed to ensuring that our graduates possess marketable skills. And whereas the professional staff has the duty to provide a comprehensive and competitive education for all students. And whereas February is traditionally designated to recognize the achievements and contributions of African Americans to the development and sustainability of our democracy, this year's theme is Black Resistance. Now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth School Board recognizes February as Black History Month, celebrating the all-important role of African Americans to the evolution of our city, commonwealth, and nation. And be it further resolved that this resolution be archived as part of Portsmouth City School Board's official records.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Standing now, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotten?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 5.2, consideration of a resolution recognizing Career and Technical Education Month, February 2023. Dr. Cromartie.
Thank you, sir. Whereas the economic and technological changes affect the nature of our work and place increasing demands on public education, and whereas career and technical education provides our communities with school-to-career connections and is the cornerstone of a strong, well-prepared workforce, fostering industrial productivity and contributing to America's leadership in the international marketplace. And whereas career and technical education provides students with the rich experiences and practical, meaningful application of workplace readiness skills designed to improve the quality of education and provide appropriate opportunities for all students to experience leadership. And whereas our career and technical education programs afford students opportunities to acquire learning experiences necessary to succeed in a complex society. And whereas the ever-increasing efforts of career and technical education, teachers, business, and industry support the growth and vitality of our local, state, and national economies by preparing graduates for career fields forecast for phenomenal growth in the next decade. And whereas the theme of this year's observance is "Celebrate Today, Own Tomorrow," now therefore be it resolved that the Portsmouth City School Board recognize February 1st through 28th, 2023, as Career Technical Education Month. And be it further resolved that this resolution be archived as part of the Portsmouth City School Board's official records.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Futrell. Any discussion? Standing now, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotten?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Agenda items 6.1 and 6.2, a public comment on non-agenda and board agenda items. Madam Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. As part of the school division's dedication to full transparency and collaboration in decision-making, the School Board of the City of Portsmouth allocates time for public comment at every regular meeting of the month to hear directly from citizens on matters of public concern regarding Portsmouth Public Schools. If you wish to address the School Board, you must register with the clerk of the board ahead of the scheduled meeting's start time. During public comment, each speaker will have five minutes to share their comments with board members. Speakers are not allowed to ear their time to another speaker, and they are not to make any formal resolutions, declarations, or proclamations as part of their comments. Speakers are reminded to maintain decorum and respect while addressing the board. Specifically, no individual personnel, student, or family should be named in comments as speakers are at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the School Board, the superintendent, nor school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers. A written copy of speakers' comments can be left with the clerk of the board, and any matter requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent and school administration to address as needed. As the board opens to public comment, the audience is asked to be respectful of all
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I am here, I'm a Portsmouth resident, I live right down the street from Churchland Academy, and I'm also a certified mindfulness teacher and have been teaching mindfulness at the Hoffler Creek Nature Preserve for the last couple of years, and will be doing it again this year. So I'm really here just to say thank you for taking a leap and putting your confidence in Coach Baker and the Inner Explorer Program that'll be going on at Churchland Academy and, and at Douglas Park. And I hope it'll be very successful and that eventually it'll be in all the Portsmouth Public Schools. But thank you again for your support, and I hope that you'll feel free to contact Coach Baker and those of us that are volunteering to help him if you have any questions along the way. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the School Board, and the public. My name is Sergio Neal. Before I start my comments, I have to say this is a first for our School Board. We have an honorable apostle, Ms. Futrell, on this School Board, and I told, I told her I was going to be good, but she knew I had to give her honorable title out. She has another honorable title. She is a great asset to the students and staff and public of Portsmouth Public Schools. I am so glad she was elected to that position. I, I see great things coming out of her way to make our school, our school system even better. Moving on, I would like to also thank Portsmouth Public Schools' administrative team for appointing Dr., I'm sorry, Coach Baker to his position as the mindfulness coordinator for the school system. We are so appreciative to have him and to be a part, and for that program to be a part of the school system. We have seen where mindfulness has had great impact on our students and their teachers as well, and they all, you know, also helps them as an individual, but there's also another important component of mindfulness, and it really contributes to school safety. It allows our students to get in the mindset if they have something that they need to address, to address in a positive manner. We have seen where a lapse in what I like to call comprehensive coverage of our students has failed in a local school district. And unfortunately, one of the teachers was hurt due to a breakdown, due to a failure in that coverage. We definitely want to not see that here in Portsmouth, so any tool that we have in our toolbox, or even further, any lifesaving technique that we can use, let us please do it for our schools. I will be the one to continue to advocate for that, and I am greatly appreciative of all of you for what you all have done as a school system to make sure we have that in place. I also wanted to briefly touch on school safety. I saw a post made by Dr. Patillo regarding some technology that's coming to our schools. I would like to say thank you all for putting that in place. That technology is very important in protecting our students and staff. I don't think there is a boundary or a limit to what you can do to preserve life in our schools. We have all seen times, numerous times, where unfortunate incidents have taken place in our school, not, not only here in Portsmouth, but across the nation. And it's happening one too many times. One too many times, one time is enough times, and we need to make sure that that doesn't happen again. So whatever you all can do to keep pushing forward, to make sure that our buildings are protected, our staff are protected, our students are protected, please keep doing so. And wherever there is a need, or wherever there is a research, you know, me by myself being, having a hand in doing some school safety stuff when I was working in the school myself, if there's any resources that you all may be looking at, they may need some community input on, please feel free to reach out, and I will do the same as, as I'll still be able to come across it. Again, thank you all for your time, and we hope you all have a good night.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, School Board. I come to you as a lifelong Portsmouth resident and a proud graduate of Portsmouth Public Schools by way of Israel Charles Norcombe High School. I currently work in the human services field, and I'm aware of how it's important to be trauma-informed in a time like this. In 2022, Portsmouth had 42 people shot and killed. We know gun violence is an urgent matter, and it's imperative that we take every tool in our toolbox to address it. We know that there was a six-year-old with a firearm in Newport News, and that's not very far, and that's also a city that people compare similarly to the reputation of Portsmouth. We do not want to see the same thing occur here. So due to the urgency of this matter, and I have my own urgency as I'm expecting my first Portsmouth child, I wanted to, I was very glad to hear about the mindfulness program coming to our school. I expected, I was fully prepared to come here and ask, what's the holdup? Because I was expecting it to be implemented in September of 2022. However, I understand how these things take time developing curriculum, reviewing things as well. So I am also wanting to thank you for supporting this in Douglas Park and Churchland Elementary. I hope to see it grow because I believe that these type of programs can increase coping skills, reduce stress levels, because these children are in these communities that the gun violence is happening to, and it's not just something distant from them. These are family members of people that we care about and students that we want to educate to the fullest. So I want to thank you for your support because hopefully it can ultimately have a positive effect on disciplinary measures as well, and I hope to see these type of initiatives continue to be supported, so thank you.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Good evening, members of the School Board, those assembled here today and those watching through various sources. My name is Brenda Joseph. I am here tonight to speak regarding a policy that I believe to be extremely outdated in the current climate and culture of our city, state, country, and world. The policy is ECA-B-R. It is the bomb threat policy for Portsmouth City Public Schools. This policy was initially adopted on August 4th, 1998, and was revised on May 20th, 1999. This policy allows building-level administrators and district personnel to make a decision in regard to evacuating a building when a bomb threat is received. It literally reads, decide if the building will be evacuated. This decision should be based on all available information. Then it says, if evacuation is necessary, and the next line. So I have a few questions to ask you to ponder. If your life were in potential jeopardy, would you want to take a chance and stay in a building where there might be a bomb? If your child were in potential jeopardy, would you want someone else to make a decision that might lead to the death of your child by having him or her stay in a building where there might be a bomb? What gives anyone employed by Portsmouth City Public Schools the right to play Russian roulette with the lives of the employees and students by making a decision not to evacuate when there is a bomb threat? My life is valuable. The lives of my coworkers and students are valuable. When a decision is made to leave us in a building where there is an active bomb threat... When a decision is made to leave us in a building where there is an active bomb threat, you show that you do not think our lives are valuable. Stop pretending we are back in the late 1900s. We are in 2023. Look at the history of violence in schools over the last 20 years. The policy in place takes the situation of a bomb threat as being a low-risk situation. Many don't think there will actually be a bomb in the building? It is not your right to risk my life or the lives of anyone else because you do not find the threat credible. Are you willing to take the chance each time? Does it actually have to happen and a bomb detonate in an occupied Portsmouth school before you take this seriously? This policy needs to be revised to reflect the current culture and climate and to support the safety of the employees and students in our school. I am asking you to revise this policy immediately. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Actually, she can come back for the next item.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Joseph, did you have another item that you want to introduce as well? Yes, you can come back, ma'am. Thank you, I apologize about that.
The other one's not so bad. I know the school calendar's on the agenda. I've been looking at the districts that are in the presentation that was made. I am a Portsmouth native, I went to Portsmouth Public Schools as well. I've been teaching in Craddock Middle School for 22 years now. Some of our buildings are old. They don't have the proper HVAC systems to handle coming back to school in the middle of August. The ACs don't work properly. I mean, I'll be point-blank, in my building, you either freeze or you roast. It doesn't matter how many times whatever system comes out. I mean, I reported a window in my room that doesn't close in October, October 12th. Took a picture, reported it. That window, it still has a gap this far. I had kids that had to wear coats in my room today because it was so cold. Do not change our calendar. The districts that get out, go earlier, they're getting out two or three days earlier than we do. They don't take Veterans Day. They don't take certain other holidays that we take, and that's the difference in the days. I've even noticed a lack, or they don't do as many parent conference days as we do. Leave it alone. If everybody else is doing something, it doesn't make it right. And just because nobody else is doing it doesn't make it wrong. Portsmouth is Portsmouth, we are who we are, we are unique. Don't change a system that works. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any more speakers? Thank you so much. Agenda items 7.1 through 7.6 are consent agenda items. It's for specific contracts, not entertaining a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second, discussion.
Motion made by Vice Chair Axton, second by Ms. Hines. Discussion, Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Can we get some clarity on these contracts before we vote on them, or does that take them out of consent? I mean, does it, I...
We can remove them out of consent, the ones you need explanations on.
I mean, I'm good with them, I just want to make sure that we don't need to have discussion on them.
The three, the three contracts were listed in Board docs.
Yep.
But if we do have any questions about them, we can do that now.
Okay.
Do you have any, any questions on the contracts listed? All right, we do have a motion and a second, and we do a roll call vote at this time. Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Futreil?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Next on the agenda item is agenda item 8.1, which is a roll call vote, consideration of a pre-Labor Day start. And I'm gonna bring Dr. Bracy forward at this time to see, in case we need a refresher on the early, the pre-Labor Day start.
I'm going to ask Lauren, if you can come and just share some of the numbers from the survey, so that we can give everyone an opportunity to see and hear those again, well, to hear those again.
Good evening. Let me pull this up really quickly. Yes, so as a reminder, we did in September have a survey that was placed on our website and on social media for two whole weeks. We had it open. Altogether, 3,851 people responded to the survey. We also brought those survey results and the topic of a pre-Labor Day start to Dr. Bracy's advisory groups, his student advisory group, staff advisory group, and parent advisory group. Our largest response group was parent and guardian. We had 2,363 responses to that, and that is where we had perhaps one of the closest delineations with 44.48% in favor of a change and 44.94% against. I'm sorry, my font size is a little small, so I want to make sure I'm right there. Next group that we had, the next largest response group was from our staff. That was 976 responses. Here, we had a slightly, slight, slight more in favor with 45.39% reporting in favor of a pre-Labor Day start, and then 43.03% against a pre-Labor Day. Our student group, we had 270 responses. As you may recall, overwhelmingly, they were not in favor of a pre-Labor Day start, 70.37% against, 20.74%. I do also should note that there, these won't ankle up to 100. We also had an option of undecided at this time, so for those who are doing the quick math in the audience. And then finally, we did have a fourth group who identified both as parent and guardian and staff members. That was 242 responses, and that was 34.71% in favor of a pre-Labor Day and 51.24% against. Overwhelmingly, everyone was for a one-week, not a two-week, pre-Labor Day start if we were to move in that direction.
Thank you so much. And what I'll do is I'll entertain a motion first, and then we can open it up for discussion at that time. Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Schumake. Now, discussion. Vice Chair Axton.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to just have a brief, see if the Board members, are we ready to move forward with this? The reason why I'm asking is because our division consists of generally, I would say, I'm just throwing it out, maybe about 17,000 students, and then if you add the parents, the survey generated about 3,800. I just want to kind of refresh our parents and staff about this decision, because I don't think they realize the impact of the decision that we're about to make and how it would impact their calendar this year. So I would say if it's the consensus of the Board, can we put out some additional communication to let the community know that we're about to vote on a, the actual calendar change? If it is the consensus, if you guys want to move ahead, then we can move forward.
Just, I'm correct, you're asking for consensus if you want to delay the vote? Well, I'll take consensus. Ms. Hines?
I'm gonna vote no on delaying the vote, simply because it's been done, the decision needs to be made so that teachers and everybody can go ahead and make their calendars accordingly. I believe that by delaying and putting this off, we're not making the decision to start before Labor Day or after Labor Day until April, which I believe puts a lot of people in a pickle. And so for that reason, I'm gonna vote for a no consensus.
Ms. Futreil?
I'm gonna vote for a yes on that, so that we can delay the vote tonight.
Dr. Cotton?
We discussed it. For the brevity of time, I'm gonna say no, but we still can get the information out so people can adjust their schedules accordingly.
Dr. Whitaker?
I'm gonna vote yes to delay, given the response rate. I'm not sure if members of the community have really paid attention to the issue.
Right. Your yes, correct. Ms. Schumake? Delay? Ms. Thomas?
I would vote no to delay at this point, only because we did have quite a bit of communication out. It went out to the schools. I'm a parent as well, and even with, it came out from the schools, it came out through us, it was blasting on social media. And my concern is also in regards to if we vote for a change, it has long implications on how we adjust probably for after-school, summer schools, camps, preparation for teachers. So I think we need to make the decision personally as soon as possible.
And I'm voting no as well, which gives us a tie, so that kills that item at this time. And my reason for voting no as well is because if we do put out an additional survey, more than likely, we won't vote on this item until around our April meeting date. And if it's a yes vote to change the calendar, you're only giving families approximately a month to decide.
And Chair, just want to confirm, when we actually vote on this, if it is a tie, then we are just gonna be stuck at the moment, correct?
If it's a tie, then the motion dies.
Sorry, Chair, yes, and that was my other question, was the motion was made, but was the motion made for a change? Like, what was the motion?
It was a move to approve.
Move to approve? One week, two week, no change?
It's...
One week?
Yeah, the motion for the change in the Board docs is for one week.
Okay, thank you.
Early start.
Okay, thank you.
And just to confirm, if we cannot reach a consensus on this motion, the motion does not carry, it dies, and if we don't have a change, we don't have a change.
Thank you. I have two, one request, one question. With starting a week early, does that mean we get out a week early? A true week early? I mean, because what I want to see is if this change is made, there's a change in August, and then there's a change in June. And what some of these other divisions are seeing is that there was a change in August, and there's not really a change in June. I want to see a real change in June if that is gonna be what it's gonna be, and I know that the calendar hasn't been made yet, because the Calendar Committee is waiting on us to make a decision, and we talked about that. But if this does happen, I really want to see a week and a week. If we give a week, and we meaning staff, we meaning parents, if we give a week in August, I want a week back in June. And I think that's the only saving grace with this, is that we go week for week. And when we discussed it earlier, it was said that it was going to be week for week. And I would like to see if Dr. Bracy can explain the reasoning that Region 2 is really looking at going pre-Labor Day, because we're not the only division that is tackling this right now. So can you give us some insight as to why Region 2 is considering this? Please, sir, thank you.
Yes, and I guess to address the first question, when we look at the calendar, we will take all that into consideration, but we've become so accustomed to a certain number of days off. When you're looking at workdays, teacher workdays, after end of the grading periods, two weeks out for winter break. So those are things we have to take into consideration, you know, over this new span of time. So we will, I know Dr. Cromartie and the Calendar Committee will do their very best so that you can actually see the difference. And if you remember, we even discussed if the Board does make this decision, and if we have a mild winter, then we would show some grace on this end as well with the days, you know. You're coming back a week early, maybe we can get out a few days early. So we'll look at all of that as well. As far as the Region 2, most of the region primarily, I think, one of the reasons that was discussed, we're looking at is because we're trying to move our alignment with the partnerships that we have with community colleges, the four-year universities that are under the true semester model. So this one week won't get us there, but it will get us closer. You know, we have our kids that end in school early that are taking part in first college. It would be an easier transition for them to, with the semester ending, and then when they come back in January, they can roll right into the community college schedule. And it will help us and it will help them on days that we're closed and they're still open, you know, with some of the transportation issues that we have in place. With the schools on the peninsula already going in that direction and coming back early, it throws the regional calendar off as well. So those are things that we try to, when we look at scheduling, even with some of the, academically, I think we discussed when we had this information out there, we talked about the kids that were in some of the AP courses, some of those courses starting beforehand with the schools that are already in that week early. So I think one of the students in the student advisory shared with me, it would give them, it wouldn't put them as much as a disadvantage with someone else having a week or more early in starting the schedule. Also with athletic events as well, we do know that, you know, practice schedules and so forth take place, although there's a hard stop and a hard start of when you can, but when kids are in school, they're more apt to be at practice. But when they're not and they have that extra week, it's difficult for them to get there because transportation, we do run transportation, but in their mind, they're not in school, they're not coming, they're not gonna participate until they actually get to school. So those were just some of the quick responses that came about as to why we were looking at it as a region. You're probably familiar with some school divisions that are actually starting early August, that are getting out in May. So it varies, it's all over the place now, but I think initially, I think eventually we'll probably see some legislation come out that will have an earlier start, even what we're looking at.
Thank you, and just to follow up on that, any change is difficult, and losing a week in a summer, it seems detrimental, and sometimes it can be, you know, it is mentally. But losing a week may be easier than losing three weeks if we were mandated to do something by the State Department, so, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other questions or discussion? I'm looking at Ms. Thomas. Ms. Schumake?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we do have a motion and a second. The motion is to approve the pre-Labor Day start, and I entertain the roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Atkinson?
No.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Futreil?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
No.
Mrs. Schumake?
No.
Mrs. Thomas?
No.
Dr. Whitaker?
No.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Three yes, five no's.
A motion does not carry. Vice Chair?
Thank you, Chair, and I just wanted to just elaborate that I do want us as a Board to revisit this conversation and topic and come to a resolution, but I would like to see communication put out, further communication put out regarding it, so we can definitely let our staff, parents, teachers know about the change again.
Thank you. And I do just want to kind of defend, not that you were coming at it, but defend Lauren. They did put out a lot of communication, I know you weren't. But I just want to say that they put out a lot of communication with the survey, and the results we actually received was higher than what we normally... and the results we actually received was higher than what we normally, uh, get on most of our surveys. So we did get quite a few back, uh, but of course, it's the board's decision to revisit another time if we choose to do so. But thank you all for your diligence on this, uh, this matter. Now, I know you love Lawrence.
Lauren, I love you. It's, it's not, it's not, I don't think the community knew that we were voting on it today. That's the communication that I, that I want to put out.
All right, thank you so much. Agenda item 9.1, Monthly Report for Curriculum Instruction. Dr. Flowers, Coordinator of Reading. Good evening, Dr. Flowers.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, um, School Board Members, Dr. Bracy, Superintendent's Cabinet, and guests. I am Dr. Angela Flowers, Coordinator of English and Reading, and I will be presenting, and, um, Dr. Wayne's absence tonight. You'll find the Office of Curriculum and Instruction Department highlights in your board documents. Tonight, I also have the opportunity and pleasure to highlight some of the initiatives that the Office of English and Reading has been implementing. As you may already know, our division has been promoting the importance of Tier One instruction to include small groups. In accordance with the Virginia Literacy Act, our team of, um, specialists, coaches, and interventionists, and classroom teachers have been participating in a series of PD to ensure that we are better equipped to address both instructional and learning gaps. Coaches, specialists, and interventionists have completed recent, have recently completed Haggerty Training, and teachers have begun their journey with Letters, which is a flexible literacy professional learning solution. These trainings provide teachers with deep knowledge, enabling them to become literacy and language experts in the science of reading. Letters provides teachers, teachers with the skills needed to master the fundamental, fundamentals of reading instruction, which include phonological awareness, phonics fluency, vocabulary, writing, and comprehension, writing, and language, which should be embedded in their daily instruction, day, um, every day. At this time, I would like to share a video from the Office of Reading, of English and Reading, which highlights why small group instruction is important and how it benefits students as they progress into secondary education.
It's important for students to be reading and writing every day, because it translates from elementary to middle to high school.
We start off in K-2 as learning to read, okay? So we're gonna get those foundational skills, that phonological awareness, phonics, sight word recognition. Small group is critical to our students, because in small group instruction, teachers are providing students with explicit, sequential, and systematic instruction. They need that explicit instruction to understand rules of language. They also need that sequential instruction to make sure that they're not skipping over, um, skills, but that they're going in order. And then they need that systematic instruction, they need it daily, and they need to be able to read, write, and think as they read.
Our first word we're gonna spell is the word jet. Jet, now let's sound it out together, you ready? First sound. J. Middle sound. L. Last sound.
You may see CVC or consonant vowel consonant words in a first grade classroom during small group instruction. They're learning beginning, medial, and ending sounds. They're also learning that you can divide a word up into onset and rhyme. And so they do a lot of manipulation with these CVC words, and that will help them become stronger decoders when they begin to read. Then we move on, and between third and sixth grade, we are reading to learn. Now they should have all those skills to be able to encode, decode words, and be able to comprehend as they read.
Making sure that you understand concepts, and looking at text structure, how, um, a piece is organized, and even looking at different skills within a piece, such as drawing conclusions and making emphasis. So that's that reading to learn part. So in middle school, we take a balanced literacy approach. That requires teachers to infuse both, uh, reading and writing, and vocabulary as well. So what you saw in the classroom was probably some authentic texts being used, and then the vocabulary piece comes in when teachers pull words from the authentic text, or they're talking about academic vocabulary.
If you wrote the word motivate or motivation, you are correct. All right, motivate, motivation, someone use it in a sentence for me, quickly.
What we try to do is make sure that students, um, see a variety of words before they start reading, so that they can understand the definitions of the words, but also be able to use them, um, in everyday contexts. It is a progression, and what we're seeing is that the students are prepared when they come to middle school, and we want to make sure that we keep that momentum rolling.
Uh, one particular student that I have seen grow, and I'm so proud of, with that small group instruction, getting that explicit instruction with the systematic and sequential instruction involved, they were able to flourish. And you see that they begin to read, and they're so proud of themselves, and so that when they take these state tests, um, it's nothing for them. They build stamina, they can sit and read for a while, and they can show you what they know.
Do any of you have any questions for me? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 9.2 is Fiscal Year 2021, 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Student Activity Fund Report. And on tonight, we have Mr. Greer Busink from Clifton Larson Allen LLP, who'll be with us to present the Financial and Student Activity Fund Audit. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Just need to get the clicker real fast. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening, sir.
So I'm here tonight to present the results of the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Audit, or ACFER, and then we'll talk about the Student Activity Reports a little bit too, so. So just, just a quick agenda, talk about our audit approach, the results, required communication, and then a little bit about GASB pronouncements. All right, so, our approach, um, so we audit, um, the schools. In addition, we also audit the city. So we do have an integrated team that we use, um, for that process, but we do, our, our focus with the school side is we do have a team that's experienced with, um, K-12 education and Student Activity Funds. So, um, that helps the process go relatively smooth. I need to start off by thanking Mr. Falk and his team for everything throughout, throughout the process. Um, they're very cooperative, makes the process easy for us, so we really appreciate their help. We couldn't do without them. So it's a risk-based approach with emphasis on assessment of key controls, um, communication. We have regular status meetings with, with management, and we even talk with some of the folks from the, the school board and with management too, so. Audit results, happy to report, that's an unmodified opinion, that's a clean opinion, that's what you want. If you look at it, you compare it to last year's, um, opinion letter, it looks a little different. What the standard setters did last year was they changed the rules, um, the standards on how the audit results are presented. So it used to be, you had to read a couple pages down till you got to where it actually said, an unmodified opinion, where it basically said the financial statements were, were, um, fairly presented. Now they've moved it up to the second paragraph, so you get the results faster. They just want to be a little more transparent. Then what you'll see is just some additional discussion within that letter that talks about management's responsibilities and the auditor's responsibilities. I won't go over that within hours, but you can take a look at that at your, um, if you have time. Reporter on internal control of our financial reporting, no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. That's what you want to hear, that's the, the best form of assurance that we can give there. Student Activity Fund results, so we send out questionnaires to all schools, so we get results back. We basically inquire different folks, make sure they have controls in place, get bank reconciliation, confirmation for all schools, and then we go through detailed revenue expense testing based on a risk assessment. We talk with management, look at turnover, things like that, and we kind of target our approach based on there. We try to do it on a rotational basis, um, so make sure everybody gets covered every few years. Uh, single audit status, that's in process, we're working on that, that's done in conjunction with the city. You can see the two programs here, ESER, um, really shouldn't be a surprise, that's a big dollar fund for you guys, and then Title I is part of rotation, um, and they'll be combined. So I did want to point out that within the financial statements, when you look at the Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, it is an award-winning report, um, I left, I forgot to put the slide in for that. But this 15 years, um, for the ASBO and GFOA certificates, um, that's as of last year's report. So they include last year's certificate in this year's report, and based on the quality of what we saw, it looks like you'd be up for 16 next year. So they're working towards that, so that's a feather in management's cap and the board for supporting them, so. Just like to point that out, it's always good to, uh, share your news. So required communications, um, just a few things, so the financial statements are the responsibility of management. Our job is to audit the financial statements. There are certain things, when you look at the financial statements, there's qualitative aspects. There are some things that are considered estimates. So some things we rely on, um, actuaries to help, um, pull some of the numbers together. Management uses those as well. So here's the estimates, so pension liability, your OPEB liability, depreciation for assets, and liability for the, uh, Workers' Confidence Self-Inurance Fund. There really aren't anything, nothing with your financial statements is really unusual or super sensitive that stands out from, from other folks, so they're relatively straightforward, as far as, from a, from an accounting perspective. If, for the, for the, you know, for the uninformed reader, there's a lot to read there. We always recommend that folks read the management's discussion, the analysis, and the transmittal. They really summarize everything, that's in the front of the, the package. And we, we look at the estimates, they appear reasonable. Um, no difficulties in dealing with management, or, and they didn't push back on any, you know, thing we wanted to do. Very helpful representation, they signed a letter to us at the end, just kind of reasserting everything they told us about the audit process. Um, no consultations with other accountants, uh, for anything unusual. And then no adjustments, we didn't have any adjustments to the financial statements. So management did a really good job preparing the statements. No significant findings to point out, and just when you look at that, when you look at the ACFER, it's 145 pages of hard work and transactions that were recorded throughout the year. So when you look at that, um, read the opinion, look, there's our different sections that are discussed at different levels. We, we don't audit, um, everything at the same level, so there are some, some other items in the back. Some things are considered, um, kind of discussion, looking forward, things like that. We can't audit what's gonna happen in the future, so management does discuss a little bit of that too, within the document. GASB pronouncements, these are not everyone's favorite topic, probably. The leases last year, or this past year, were new for the school board. Really didn't have an impact, because you don't have a lot of leases. The city has more than leases there. We did have to do some work, we worked with management, they, they kind of scrubbed their records to look for any unidentified leases that might have to be recorded. Really didn't find anything significant. And then what's coming up for this year is subscription-based information technology arrangements. That's, um, your agreements with software providers for long-term, um, services. So this, this one might be a little more evolved for the school board this year, but that's a, you know, they, they don't get a break as far as new standards go, there's always something new coming, so they're working hard to make sure they meet everything, um, and get everything done. So this is everything, this is me, this is Kara Rockman, she's my, uh, manager on the job. And that's everything I want to cover, so I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. You did say we're unmodified, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I did, I heard it, I saw it, and I didn't put, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn my mic on. I just wanted to make sure that we had an unmodified opinion. I heard it, I saw it, and my brain just didn't put it together, because I like for you to start off with that. And so then you can tell us about the 16, almost 17 years now of certificates that our lovely management team has put together, so I'd like to thank Mr. Falk for that one as well. But I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding what you were saying, thank you.
Unmodified, you also hear it's not as a clean opinion.
Yes. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, sir.
You're welcome, we got you up for good night.
Agenda item 9.3 is our budget update, Mr. Falk.
Good evening, Chairman Patillo, Vice Chair Ms. Atkinson, Dr. Bracy, School Board Members. Good evening. Before I begin this presentation, as Dean is pulling it up, I just want to thank everybody in public, portion of public schools that had a hand in putting that financial report together. It's not only me, I stand, a bunch of people stand behind me. Thank y'all. I want to especially thank Larissa Harris, who's my, um, Director of Accounting slash Controller. She does a lot of the work on this document, um, and it's her leadership that provides that, uh, push to make sure that we continue to be well, well documented, great with what we do in financials, and putting this award-winning document together. So I want to give her thanks, and then to all the people out in the schools with the Student Activity Funds, our bookkeepers, our principals, thank them too, because they spend countless hours every day doing those transactions. When auditors come in, they can pull anything, and it doesn't matter when you did it, if you did it in July, or you did it in June. And it is important that we celebrate them for that, because they have schools to run, and instruction, and discipline, and everything else. So I want to give them my thanks, since I stand up, it's not just me. Now, tonight, we're talking about the Fiscal Year 2324 Budget Update. Um, as you know, at this time of year, and all throughout the year, because a budget never stops, we start processing, uh, the budget for this year, starting with when we get our state budget, estimates in December from our lovely, uh, governing body in, uh, Richmond. So tonight, what I want to do is go over some of the things we've seen in that state budget so far, because we know the General Assembly will change some things, and give you a snapshot of what's in the governor's budget, what kind of to look forward to in the calendar, uh, for this year. Dean, next slide. All right, we can go to the next one as well. This year's budget, you can go to the next slide. This year's budget is the second year of a BIM, the 2324 budget. As you know, in the second year of a BIM, normally there's not a lot of new money, and I got a report from what we're looking at right now, there's not a new, lot of new money. They re-benchmark in the first year of the BIM, which means they take everything from the prior two years, put it in a pot, and re-benchmark what it costs to run schools in this great state of Virginia. This is the second year, so anything that would be a new initiative would have to come from the governor or either the legislative branch. Right now, there's not a lot, but I think that's gonna change. This year, they had updates to average daily membership, as we always do. They look at the, in membership in September. They put that in their calculators and say, this is what we think your average daily membership will be as of March 31st, and this is what we base your numbers on for the next year. Sales tax as well. Every year, we get a new sales tax projection, depending on what the economy is doing. And then lastly, and most importantly for us right now, lottery revenue projections, which will include some of the projections for what the casinos would do for this state, uh, in the coming years, including the one that will be opening, I think, next week in Portsmouth. It also has a 5% salary increase for SOQ-funded positions that's effective as of Ju- July 1st, 2023. I repeat, for SOQ-funded positions. As we all know, the state's budget does not fund every position that a school has, only what they consider in standards of quality as positions that we're eligible for. So any other additional monies for salaries for the rest of the school division's employees would have to come from a combination of local, federal, and any other funding sources you would have to provide those raises. And then lastly, very unique one, they're funding for a one-time 1% retention bonus for SOQ-funded positions for staffs, staff that is employed in FY 2023 at any point, but come back to work with us in 2024. So still trying to get information on that. It looks like a straight retention bonus, if you're an employee in 2023, you come back in 2024, we'll give you, they will give us funding for 1%, for SOQ-funded, once again. And remember, the state pays on prevailing costs, so they don't take a roster of your teachers and say, here's what you're paying teachers, instructional staff, principals, librarians, counselors, here's a number. They do a estimate across the state, so you may win, you may lose, depending on the estimate. No, most of the time, you lose with that. And, and I would put this in perspective, a one-time bonus for someone who's making $50,000 is $500, just to put that in perspective, because it looks like 1% is a lot. But when you put it in perspective, it's not that much in, in consideration to what we, and for all of our employees. And again, if we do that, we would have to find money for those that are not in SOQ. Next slide, Dean. Another thing they're putting in this year is an expansion of early reunion specialist initiatives. They're moving it, the funding from K3 to K5. That funds one reading specialist position, I believe, for every 550 students in a building. So moving it to K5, we would get additional funding because they put more students in that calculation. Another new initiative is they're trying to hire some additional math specialists in grades K to 8 to improve the achievement of students across the Commonwealth. So they're giving us additional money to hire additional math specialists based on a formula that they will give us. And then lastly, as you've heard over the past two years about the elimination of grocery tax, I believe they just eliminated the 1.5% grocery tax that we would pay that was the state funding. They have to give us money to make up for that revenue loss because the sales tax that came from that went in the calculation of sales tax that comes back to schools. So that money is going to be almost like a whole harmless. They're giving the money back that we would have lost because of the elimination of the grocery tax. And that in a nutshell is all that's in the budget as of right now. But obviously, the legislature is at, at play. I'm sure we'll see some other initiatives come through, and we'll just keep waiting to see what happens as they go along. This is a short session. So that means they'll be done maybe pretty quickly. Maybe. In the last couple of years, we've seen that either short or long, it doesn't matter, the budget came out about June. So we'll just see what happens with the split legislature. We'll see what happens. But that's pretty much it on the budget. Dean, next slide. Just want to give you an important calendar updates for the budget process for this year. February 9th, Dr. Bracy will present to you his estimates of needs and the proposed budget for FY 23-24. In late February, we're having a joint meeting with City Council. We haven't locked down that date just yet, to my knowledge. We'll probably have that locked down in the next week or so, and we'll get you that date to make sure that it's on your calendars. And on September 23rd, we have a public hearing on the proposed budget. Mid to late March, if, if, you know, I got a lucky clover, we're going to get the General Assembly adopt this state budget. Please don't hold your breath, but it might happen. We approve our budget on the 23rd of March. The next day, we submit that budget to the city manager. City manager then presents her presentation of the proposed budget on the 27th, which is a Monday. City Council adopts their budget on May 9th. And then we come back and adopt our budget on May 18th with any changes that we need to have with state revenue or local revenue. And that in a nutshell, right now, is the budget calendar. Other than that, I don't have anything else tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Ms. Thomas.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I almost said Dr. Falk, but Mr. Falk, thank you. Thank you. And I just first wanted to start off by saying congratulations on an excellent audit. And thank you for all the hard work that you do to just always get the awards recognition for our school board. So thank you. Also, I'm going to ask you a few questions that I know that you've explained to me before, but I just want to, for the public and just for our understanding, I've learned a lot about the budget process through you and the questions and your patience. But when you've talked about the, some of the upcoming changes that we might see or that is expected to happen, you mentioned the 5% salary increase for SOQ positions. And you stressed the SOQ positions as well as the 1%. Can you, do you know, like, out of our positions that we have, how many are SOQ and how many are not? Because that definitely impacts the numbers that we're going to put in our budget, which I think is important for the public to understand. Because we're expected to fund the non-SOQ positions just to make everything equal in our school system.
Yes, ma'am. We actually have approximately 1,304 positions that are SOQ positions. We have a total, and I almost looked at Jessica, about 2,200, about 2,200 employees.
So that's the gap that we have to fill.
Roughly about two-thirds of them, somewhere around there. And again, I, I stress prevailing rates because they don't pay us at what we pay employees. So that number may not be as nearly. They're not taking enumeration of years of service and all that. They give me an average. So that's the difference in SOQ versus what we have to staff a school. Because SOQ standards do not staff a, a school system. They just don't. If we did it at SOQ standards, for example, just to give you a good example, they fund three elementary assistant principals.
Right.
Three, three. If you want to get technical, 3.01, but I'm going to leave that alone.
Right.
Three. If we had three assistant principals at the elementary level in our schools, we couldn't function.
That's right.
So that, that's where the rubber meets the road when you look at the actual SOQ standards and what they actually fund.
In our budget, to make sure that all of our employees receive the raise, we have to make up the difference.
Yes, ma'am. We, we don't give raises only to SOQ positions. We give raises to all of our employees because all of our employees are important.
And then my other, I do have a question. I don't think I've ever asked you before, but.
Oh, Lord.
It might not make any sense, but for the ADM, does that correlate to the SOQ? Like, do they correlate, this is how much, I guess, how many staff members you need?
So.
Or basically.
So certain revenue structures are dependent on the ADM number. So in other words, if you have an ADM, they give you a per pupil amount. And that determines how much state revenue you get. So here's where it meets the road. If we project an ADM that's higher than what we actually get at the end of the year, we may be short funds. So the important thing is to project ADM conservatively with what you know so that you're not projecting at the beginning of the year or now that you're going to have X amount of money. And then the students don't materialize, and your money is lower than what you would expect. We use a, a number of tools, but the Weldon Cooper standard is what we usually try to use for our estimates because they're pretty true. In a transient city as such as Portsmouth with military, in this whole area, you have to be careful because after, you know, after, we watch military movement. So January, we see, oh, December, we see a lot of ships come in. But then you know that there's another squadron going out in January. So you have to be very careful. That makes a difference in the number of students we have. You know, our, our first college students coming in and out makes a very difference in how many students are with us in the second semester. So we try to factor all that in.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hines.
Thank you. Mr. Falk, I want to thank you as always for being thorough and being confident in your answers and being willing to answer our questions and not defer them. I do want to give the, the school system a shout out because when we, when we met earlier to talk about some budget things that I had a couple of questions about, when I asked about the raise, you know, and so whether, not the raise, the, the bonus.
Yes, ma'am.
The $1,000 bonus. I, I think what people, what I want to make sure that people understand how our school system feels about our employees, our, our bonus that we gave was a flat $1,000 bonus. The school system picked up the taxes on that $1,000 bonus to the tune of about $450 per person, per bonus. So that way, our employees could get a, a flat $1,000 bonus. And for that, I want to make sure that you and your staff are, you know, are praised for your compassion and, and looking out for our staff, that, you know, we're not saying we have a five, you know, a five, a $1,000 bonus, but, you know, you're only going to get like, you know, four, 650 of it because you're going to have to pay taxes on that. And so even with this 1% budget, even if we use the $500 just to cut it in half, that's still another $250 on top of the SOQ positions that we're going to, that we would find money to make that happen. So I just want to be sure that people understand that when we talk about taking, we try to take care of the, the best way that we can our employees to make sure that we can give them as much as we can give them. Because that's not the same everywhere. And so I just wanted us to be sure that we understood that. And that is, you know, from your directive and from your vision, Mr. Falk. So that, that touched me to make sure, you know, that there are people that, that are looking out for all of our staff. And so I wanted everybody to understand that, and I wanted to give you a heartfelt thank you. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, sir. Agenda item 10.1 is consideration of expulsion, discipline case 2022 dash 23 slash 03. I entertain a motion at this time.
I move to approve the expulsion case of said discipline case.
Move for approval?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Thomas. Any discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 10.2, consideration of a readmission, case number 2022 dash 23 slash 04. Prefer discipline case number 2021 dash 22 slash 03. I entertain a motion at this time.
I move that we readmit as a student with virtual instruction for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year.
Motion made by Ms. Hines, second by Ms. Futrell, I believe. Any discussion? Ms., Ms. Schumake, and then Ms. Thomas.
So I just want to be clear on the reason why I'm going to vote no tonight is because I'd rather this particular individual return immediately. Without giving any specifics, in this particular case, I understand that not everyone can have someone to advocate for them at home. And I actually had the mentors of this individual to show me and tell me, and I saw for myself, the change that this individual wanted to make. So I just wanted to be clear, I would like for this person to come back immediately versus what the board is recommending. Thank you.
Ms. Thomas.
Yes, my question is regarding the motion. If we needed to state in that motion what placement would be, or is that outside of the motion?
She stated it would be virtual.
I mean, in what grade level? Do we need to state that in the motion? No? Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumake? Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Seven yes votes, one no, it passes.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 11.1, monthly report, Dr. Bracy.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening. Chair Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, members of the board. I'm here tonight with great news to share out. As you may have seen last week, our own Karen Roberts has been named the Virginia Association for Career and Technical Education State Teacher of the Year. According to. According to, she is, is the Excellence Awards, which recognizes those individuals who have made extraordinary contributions to CTE programs that exemplify the highest standards in organizations that have conducted activities to promote and expand CTE programs. You all may know Ms. Roberts is a nutrition and wellness teacher at Manor High School. In addition to her duties, she also serves as an advisor for a number of clubs at the school, including family career and community leaders, which FCC LA. You know, I can speak to her great care and passion for her students from a personal experience because she was my son's advisors for a number of years. So we're very proud of her and congratulate her on her well-deserved honor. Well, we, we have a couple of upcoming events that I want to highlight for families. First, our third graders at our Title I schools. Make sure you mark your calendars for Thursday, January 26th, for the Reading Escape Room. Throughout the night, third graders and their parents or guardians will work on their literacy skills by taking part in a number of reading activities that will go to help solve a mystery case. Space is limited, so if you haven't registered, please do so. In fact, families are asked to register by January 22nd. You can visit the website at www.cutt.ly/readingescastroom. For more information, complete your registration. Now, for our high school juniors, we're excited to announce that we're partnering with SAT School Day to allow you the opportunity to take the SAT for free. That's right, we're covering the cost for the SAT for you. SAT School Day is where you get to take the SAT right in your home during the school day, in your home school during the school day. We got to make that clear. That means not. That means not waking up early on a Saturday morning to drive to another school or a testing center. You are right in your own building. The SAT School Day is Wednesday, March 22nd, but you have to register by next Friday, the 27th. You can register by visiting www.ppsk12.us/sat. Finally, I'll end with a calendar reminder. Our first semester ends next week, so we will have an adjusted dismissal day next Friday, January 27th, and a teacher work day with no school for students on Monday, January 30th. Chairman Patillo, that completes my report.
Thank you so much, sir. Agenda item 11.2, Board Members' Comments. And I'll start with Dr. Whitaker.
This is more of a question than a comment concerning graduation and the decoration of graduation caps. This has been brought to my attention. Is this the policy to not allow students to decorate? Is that a school policy per school, or is that a school board policy?
Dr. Whitaker will address that question. In the past, it was a division, not policy, but expectation that students not decorate the mortar boards on their cap. And at that time, we had lengthy conversations back and forth as to whether or not that was going to be permissible. Now, one of the vendors that makes the cap and gowns will actually, if the school chooses, put the school logo on the top of the mortar board. It is my understanding that IC Norcom has selected that product. The other two schools are still sort of weighing it out, but IC Norcom has committed. So it's not a decoration where students have the individual autonomy to decorate their caps. It's the item that they've selected from the vendor, if that makes sense.
Okay, well, I have a follow-up question. So if we don't have a division-wide policy, what happens if students want to decorate there?
Right, thank you. When that conversation came up, I believe in 2018, it was the consensus of the board at that time that individual expression on mortar boards would not be permissible. It certainly may be taken up again if that is you all's pleasure. But my recollection from 2018 was that the board did not want individual expression on mortar boards.
Well, then I have a question for the lawyer. Can the board squash, I guess, what I would consider freedom of expression?
So we should talk about that fully at a closed session? I'm going to provide important advice on that issue, but I will be searching. Freedom of expression does apply to students in schools. Freedom of expression, the First Amendment, does apply in a school setting, but it is not your standard broad rights that, that apply everywhere else. There are other considerations in the school division. I've written First Amendment memos for closed session discussions before and other topics. I'll dust it off, and I'll be prepared to present to you at a closed session if you like.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Any other board member comments? Ms. Hines?
Thank you, Chair. I just want to, it's more of a, I don't know, I don't know if it's a comment or a question, but I'm just going to go with it. I just want to thank teachers for their hard work this semester. Coming back after, the, the, right after COVID year was one thing. Coming back after this year has been another. With shortages and with everything else that we have, for those teachers that come to school and do their best and work their best for their, for their students, I do want to say thank you. I do want to remind that we do have a break coming up. We've got a half-day PD day, and we have a workday. And I just want to make sure that our workday stays a workday for our teachers, and it's not filled with meetings. Yes, I understand that meetings have to happen, but they do need most of their days to get that work done, especially at our elementary level where they have not had planning because encore teachers are being pulled to cover classes where they haven't had any breaks. I really want to make sure that we, as a division, protect those dates and protect those times for those teachers who do come in and give it to us because it is well-deserved, because our teachers do. because our teachers do do the best that they can every single day. I do want to say thank you. And like I said to our student representatives earlier today, we're halfway there. It's on the downhill. So just keep your heads up and keep moving, and we do appreciate as a board everything that you do. So thank you.
Ms. Thomas.
Thank you. I think I know the answer to this question, but I just wanted to see, we are no longer, as a school division, tracking the locals' COVID transmission rates? That's correct? For making decisions in terms of mask wearing because it's no longer our responsibility. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I just wanted to put that out there for the public. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, that's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Vice Chair Atkinson.
Thank you, Chair. To elaborate on board member Thomas's comment, I would like to ask our attorney a question. Hypothetically speaking, if the board feels that is unsafe as far as with the COVID rates increasing, I know that if we go against the grain, we can get sued. What does that process look like? Who would sue us? Would it be the state?
That's probably another issue that we should discuss in closed session. No, but to answer your question directly, we had a lengthy conversation with the Port Shun Health Department and just Mr. Durren's office, Human Resources, early last week, and got some information about how they're addressing various outbreaks and how they identify in the reporting requirements. There are still mechanisms for closures of schools in outbreak scenarios that are fall within the gambit of the public health rules. If you're thinking about something broader than that, I probably need a little bit more information about exactly what you want, and we can certainly discuss that in a closed session if needed, if you want legal advice on it.
Gotcha. So if there's, for example, like you said, it's still laws in place to where we could, like, mask certain schools? For example, if Churchland area has, like, high numbers, we can...
So would I, the, no. But however, with the public health department's input, they are tracking things like cluster outbreaks and things of that nature. I would, if you want more color on that, I would definitely advise you to involve the public health authority in that question about what they're doing in that regard. It might help you get some color around the issue.
Gotcha. So basically, call your legislator. Gotcha.
Any other board member comments? Seeing nothing. Thank... Oh, Ms. Hines.
Move for adjournment?
Second. Thank you.
Thank you so much, y'all. Have a great night.